January 7, 2021. Happy New Year, everyone. And I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And we'll start off with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God. For the citizens of liberty and justice for all.
So we do have an adjustment to today's agenda. On the on the items, it's listed that we're gonna approve the meeting minutes from the third. That has already happened. So can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda, leading number A, under the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have approved amended agenda. And first up on our approved amended agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. And we do have several people who have signed up. Go through the list here. First on the list that I have is Carol Robinson. Is Carol with us?
I do not see Carol at this moment. Maybe we circle back at the end.
Okay. And then I'll hopefully go to Kieran. She on?
She'll be coming on.
Great.
Hi.
Good to see you.
It's Walter.
Introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Kieran McMichael. I am a homeowner on Hall Street and a public school teacher, a Sunday school teacher, and a precinct committee officer for Lacey 309. Thank you for giving us a voice and ensuring that city council meetings are easily accessible and available on a variety of formats. So the boundaries of Lacey 309 precinct extend from 14th Avenue Southeast to College Street, to the I-5, to Slater Kinney, and then a few blocks beyond that area. And within that precinct, there is an affront to public decency. Washington Administration Code 468-66-050. Under sign classifications and specific provisions, Section 2 for Type 3D says that temporary political campaign signs must be removed within 10 days after an election. And after primary elections, temporary political campaign signs endorsing a successful candidate may remain up to 10 days after the succeeding general election. And Lacey City sign regulations classify that political signs are temporary signs. The last general election was conducted on November 3, and the result of the Washington State Governor race was announced that day. And despite that, the giant Kulp sign on College Street, almost directly across from City Hall and others in town, have stood erect. The Secretary of State confirmed the results on December 3, 2020. And despite this, the giant Kulp signs all around town have stood erect. Some of Kulp's followers, and Kulp himself, has stood their ground in denying the results of the gubernatorial election and the results of the presidential election as well. They have given out Secretary of State Kim Wyman's personal phone number and address and have harassed and threatened her. They have stormed the Capitol and led heavily armed protests denying the results of the election and the effects of COVID. And some people associated with this group have fired weapons, striking pit people on the city streets of Olympia, causing great bodily harm and driven away holiday shoppers during the height of the Christmas shopping season from small businesses who are struggling from the effects of the pandemic. En masse, election deniers have shown little respect for the life and liberty of the other people who live in this country and don't ascribe to their beliefs. Yet those signs still stand in violation of the city and state regulations. In light of the attacks by election deniers yesterday on the Washington DC Capitol and at the Washington Governor's Mansion, the election denier protested the Washington State Capitol and more, I urge city council to take a stand against a symbol of mass delusion. The very sight of it incites the notion that the city of Lacey supports the election deniers committing these heinous acts. So I ask city council, please tear down these signs. Thank you, sir.
I will have a conversation with our city attorney and our city manager. Can I'm not sure what our recourse is on this, Mr. City Manager?
Well, so it's correct. We do have a temporary sign ordinance, and there are limitations of how long they could be on in an area. But we'll pursue that with code enforcement and make sure they're in compliance with our code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Wayne Olson. Hey, Wayne. You know the drill.
My name is Wayne Olson, a resident at Panorama in Lacey, and I would like to make a few comments about the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, of course, the TCMP. Earlier this week, each of you received a copy of the petition urging your your support of the TCMP. This petition contains the names of 129 Panorama residents who agree with the petition and authorize their names to be attached to it. You may recognize some of those names. Some have served in Lacey government positions. Some have served at state and other local government positions. Some have served in state and local government area in the area, and all have had amazing careers. We may be old, but many of us seem to have forgotten that we are retired and still are active, as active as in our career days. We all care about our children and grandchildren's future. In providing their names for the petition, the residents were not asked for comments, but many added some anyway. And so here's a sampling. Quote, "Each day, the need for action becomes greater." This is Carol Thomas. Quote, "It is getting late in the game. We must do all we can immediately to mitigate the horrors of climate change." And this was from David Clemmons. Quote, "It is imperative that the TCMP be adopted and implemented for the well-being of our families, ourselves, and our nations. We can no longer wait and see what happens. It is already happening, and we need a plan." This quote was from Robert D. Bowers. Quote, "I still find it hard to believe that this is controversial." This was from Bruce and Nancy Hansen. And quote, "Full and enthusiastic support for the entire proposal," Dick Murphy. All 129 of us, and undoubtedly many hundreds of times more in Lacey, are rooting for you to be successful at implementing the TCMP. Please be aggressive to meet this challenge and know that we do have your backs. So I wish you well and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. I know that you reached out to me to ask me about some timelines. I just want to let you know I'll get back to you as soon as we have that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last person who's signed up looks like Barack Gale. Go ahead and introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes. You're on mute. But you can take yourself off.
Can you see me okay?
Can't see you, but that's all right. You can start your video or you can just go from there.
Oh, you don't see me? Okay.
But that's all right. You can go ahead and just give your comments and keep your comments about three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there you go. I can see you now.
Okay, great. Okay, my name's Barack Gale. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I wear a number of hats. I'm a retired optometrist, and I served as facilitator of the Green Team of the Jewish congregation in Olympia Temple Beitach Filo. I I believe, well, first of all, I want to mention I I urge the council, your council members, to please adopt the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Plan in its entirety and as urgently as possible. With COVID, I think we all understand how critically it's important it is that we follow the science, that we wear masks, and that we practice social distancing. Well, if ever there was a time to follow the science in our lives, it's now. If ever there was a time in human civilization to follow the science, it's now. You know, there was a a very prophetic rabbi in the 20th century, Rabbi Abraham Heschel, who marched with Martin Luther King in Selma. And he he said, "Now is the time for moral courage and spiritual audacity." Well, now is the time for moral courage and spiritual audacity for the sake of the kids, like Wayne Olson just spoke. I want to I want to just mention, this is what's happening. This is the this is the emergency that that we're facing. Of course, it doesn't mean that in the year 2030, the world will suddenly end. But what it does mean is that these these disasters that we're seeing, like the explosion of fire in California, Oregon, Washington, over four million acres burned in California, thousands of people evacuated, lost their homes. This was at a senior center in Appa County. These these what what the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, says is these events will get worse. And 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 by the year 2030, the globe will reach the crucial threshold of 1.5 degrees centigrade over historic temperatures. And that means hundreds of millions of people will be affected. And these are just the fires we saw in our own state this summer. You may, right after the IPC reported two years ago, our own federal government, these 13 federal agencies reported with the Forest National Climate Assessment that was mandated by Congress in the 1990s. And look at this graph that was reported in the Northwest Study. It's not it's not forest management, ocean that has some effect. It's not arson that has, you know, that can be a trigger. It's climate change that is the key driver of wildfire in in the world. And and this is this is a terrible, terrible problem. I just want to to end with one other comment. And that is that is a medical medical remark. You know, we've this is not, these are not normal clouds. This was the smoke that smothered our state, smothered the West Coast this summer with toxic smoke, not only from wildfires, but from neighborhoods burning up. And this has terrible effects on asthma and people with respiratory illness. My own spouse had to go in for a lung function test, like you see here in in Lacey. And and the respiratory technician said, you know, people were coming in off the streets who never had breathing problems before. She she called it an apocalypse. And and we're seeing, here you see in that federal study, the constellation of human impacts of climate change, many, many impacts. And it's not surprising that 150 medical societies across the country, including right over here, the American Medical Association, signed this statement, the US called to action, basically saying climate change is one of the greatest threats America has ever faced. And they call upon civic leaders like yourselves to prioritize action. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Appreciate your comments. And you have a great day. Thank you for your comments. We have now reached the end of our public comments. And so next up on our agenda is under ordinances. And first ordinance that we're gonna look at is ordinance 1576, the application for zoning text amendments to LMC 16.39. And I will turn this over. I know it's not Rick. It's
Ryan.
Ryan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna share my screen here. If you could just give me one second. Everybody see that okay?
Yep.
Great. So we have in front of you this afternoon is a zoning text amendment request to amend the LMC related to the light industrial commercial zone related to larger buildings. And I'll go into a little bit more detail here about what the the amendment entails. But before that, I wanted to introduce you back to what a zoning text amendment is, which is a request to change in permitted uses across an entire zoning district. This is not a rezone. This is not a site-specific rezone. Those are a different thing. This is related to changing permitted uses across an entire zone in the city, and that zone happens to be the light industrial commercial zone. So we have a private property owner, which is the applicant, requesting a change of permitted uses on all properties that are zoned light industrial commercial in Lacey. The change proposed is related to an existing standard that allow does not allow buildings above 200,000 square feet. The proposal is to allow buildings up to 500,000 square feet with certain specific development requirements in place. It's important to note that there are no project, there's no project proposed at this time. It's a application for redesignating the permitted uses. Any project will be required to go through the land development process at a later date and will be required to meet the requirements of the Lacey Municipal Code, Public Works and Development Guidelines standards at that point. What processes the proposed amendment undergone to this point? A little bit of background as far as where we've been on this application. The application itself has been under a staff and agency review that was about a nine-month-long process culminating in an August 31 of virtual open house, where we provided notice to property owners and neighbors in the vicinity of where this zoning text amendment would would apply. And that is available currently still on the city's YouTube. So so that's available for viewing if anybody's interested to get a little bit more information. Included the review by the Planning Commission over the last year, which that culminated in a public hearing held back on November 17. The Planning Commission, after that November 17 hearing, made a motion to, actual recommendation, to approve the amendment to the city council. And that's the reason it's here for you tonight. And you were fully briefed at your work session back on December 10 on the the application itself. So in front of you tonight, you have an ordinance to formally consider making amendments to that light industrial commercial zoning code. So I mentioned this is across the entire light industrial commercial district. But really, there are there's three main areas of the city that are zoned light industrial commercial, and the only one that has a parcel configuration that's large enough to be able to handle a building between 200,000 and 500,000 square feet and has ownership patterns that are consolidated enough to to basically be able to put a large building on a site is this property that you see on your screen here. It's located in the Hawks Prairie area, located off of Marvin Road, north of Britton Parkway. So it encompasses the Hill Betty Business Park as well as some undeveloped property on that that site as well. So a little bit about what the proposed zoning text is and what those amendments will set out to accomplish. First, as I mentioned, it's to accommodate buildings between 200,000 and 500,000 square feet. This would only apply to sites of 40 acres or more. So as I mentioned, this site would be the only one, the one that's in Hawks Prairie off of Marvin Road. It would require that existing buildings within wellhead protection areas be transferred from septic to sewer within 24 months. The specific area of Lacey has some older development, some older buildings that are currently on septic in close proximity to a city well. And it's important that upon redevelopment of the site that they be connected to city sewer to protect the wellhead that's in the proximity there. It also addresses the retention of small and medium-sized businesses. The way it does this is through approval of a development agreement with the city council that sets aside five acres of property for business retention. And that's really important because there are some small businesses and some small buildings on this site that will be retained, even though a large building will be placed on the site. And that was a key thing with staff's concern on this is that we didn't want to lose those smaller businesses or those smaller buildings if and when a larger building was built on that site. Also, the development agreement would address the future redevelopment of that site as well as the aesthetics that would be associated with that for along our major transportation corridor, specifically what the redevelopment of this site would look like along Marvin Road to encourage some upgrades to buildings and landscaping in that area. Here's an aerial photograph of the site where the location of the light industrial commercial zone is. As I mentioned, most of this is the Hill Betty Business Park with a number of existing buildings. The the former driving range property, as well as the the home or the the former home of Evelyn Betty and and her farm area. The the smaller buildings that are up against Marvin Road, council has made aware, and you were briefed at your last meeting, the importance of these from an economic development standpoint for incubating small businesses. These spaces, while they're not necessarily attractive, they do provide a resource in terms of economic development and these small businesses that need, you know, maybe that are coming out of their garage or coming out of our maker space that needs small, flexible spaces that are relatively affordable. And the concern is if we were to lose these to development, that there might not be places in Lacey, let alone Thurston County, that they would be able to locate relocate to. Here's what those spaces look like. You know, they're they're, like I said, they're not necessarily the most attractive, but from a functionality standpoint, from a small business standpoint, they're very flexible. And, you know, they have clear span area with a small office in most of these. And so these are the types of spaces that are really important for small businesses to first kind of to first kind of incubate within. The zoning text also addresses compatibility with neighborhood, neighboring properties, just like our current requirements for larger buildings in the light industrial zone. This is things such as buffering, a truck bay door orientation, and the requirements for a noise study. When a larger building is built, a noise story, study is required prior to, uh, construction with the actual land use application. It addresses truck access and circulation to make sure that truck access is limited to our arterials. Requires design review, uh, to look at what the building looks like on the exterior to make sure it's compatible with the area. It also requires that a neighborhood meeting be held with the, the adjoining neighbors, um, letting neighbors know that a future larger warehouse building is being built in the, in the area and encourages them to participate in those meetings. There was a significant amount of background analysis, uh, completed by the applicant and done by staff, uh, with the application. And I'm not going to be able to go into great detail, but I just wanted to highlight some of those things that were provided. Um, one of which being that the history of the light industrial, light industrial commercial building square footages uh, that you all are aware of. We've gone through several different iterations of light industrial and light industrial commercial square footages over the last fifteen to twenty years. Uh, the focus on the retention of the existing small and medium businesses and the markets associated with those small, medium businesses, and given the importance for, for retaining those buildings onsite that would, um, accomplish that, um, that, that would meet our economic development goals of business retention and expansion in Lacey specifically with those smaller buildings. It addresses the conversion of the onsite septic systems and, and the issues associated with that. Uh, the compatibility with surrounding land uses. So the applicant actually completed an acoustical report, um, that talks about potential impacts and how that might be mitigated and, and is mitigate, being mitigated through, uh, various code provisions and addresses traffic and circulation. Uh, the applicant prepared a traffic report that shows what, uh, future traffic would be associated with a larger building in this area. There was public outreach that was conducted. As I mentioned, we, uh, held that virtual open house back on August thirty first. Associated with that was a website that was developed by the applicant, um, as well as a postcard mailing, letting people know about that open house. Uh, we also did a public, significant public hearing notice, uh, mailed out to all property owners within the light industrial commercial zone, as well as within three hundred feet of the zone. So that's across all zones across the city. Um, we did not receive through the public hearing process any, um, uh, comments other than those from the applicant. So we did not receive any, um, public comment. So I'll wrap it up here with the planning commission's recommendation. The planning commission, as I mentioned, did hold a hearing back in November. At the, at the conclusion of that hearing, they recommended to the council that this be, uh, passed at a, uh, eight to one. Um, there was, uh, one dissenting vote. Uh, there is a substantial, uh, record that supports the request, and that's in your packet that you have in front of you. Um, as well as the finding is a fact that were developed by staff and recommended by the planning commission that supports the request. Uh, the one dissenting vote, uh, felt that the request was actually contrary to the intent of the light industrial commercial, uh, zone and the vision of the city to accommodate a greater number of large buildings. They felt like we had a significant number and didn't need to necessarily accommodate more and felt like the vision of this area of the city was to not have more larger buildings. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, that your next step is to consider the planning commission's recommendation tonight. Um, and that ordinance is, um, in front of you as well. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Can I get a motion? Give me just a sec here, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve, uh, ordinance related to the private applicant initiated zoning text amendment to the L M C sixteen thirty nine, increasing the square footage limit for buildings in the light industrial commercial zone.
Second.
Moving second, uh, discussion. The deputy mayor.
So just to per clarification, this is the only site that will accommodate the, uh, zoning change correct amendment, correct?
The, the zoning change will apply across all industrial commercially zoned property. However, this property is the only one that's large enough to be able to accommodate a larger building.
Okay, that's, okay. So normally, I really hate changing, uh, having an amendment to the, um, zoning change based on a private developer's accommodation. However, it does change things from septic to sewer. It does accommodate for the smaller warehouses on the site. And I'd hate to see that disrupted. So, uh, I would support it, but I, I always find it just kind of a little, um, difficult to accommodate one person's vision when it doesn't apply, really can apply to anything else.
Councilor seven, did you have a comment?
Um, I did, Mayor, thank you. Uh, a few things. Hey Ryan, if you can, um, can you go to page fifty three or on the, on the report?
Sure.
Is that possible?
Do you want me to share my screen?
So everyone, i- if you can, and go to page fifty three. It should be, um, the, all the, it's the different sized buildings. You have the incubator one existing and I think they're eight thousand square foot buildings. And then the, the medium sized ones that are probably about twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, we'll see it. You should be able to see it.
Perhaps, yeah, exactly, that's the one. So, um, what I do like about this demonstrates a great, um, multi-use, like diversifying your portfolio, okay? You have the incubator spaces of, I believe those are the eight thousand square foot buildings that are existing currently. Down in the lower right hand corner is, um, where Stoddle Wines used to be. And, um, you know, before they, they moved and, and those bigger buildings are probably twenty or twenty five thousand square foot, I'm guessing. So this is the kind of development we want is multi-use to where it's, it fits everybody, no matter what size your business is. Um, now, having said that, uh, you know, do we want another five hundred thousand square foot building? Probably not, but if it saves those eight thousand square foot buildings and those twenty five thousand square foot buildings, then that's a, um, pretty good, um, credit on behalf of the, um, the property owners. Cause they see the value in, in that, in the businesses that can graduate from the eight thousand to the twenty, twenty five thousand square foot building and possibly up to a hundred thousand, you know, cause you have multi tenants in the hundred and twenty five thousand square foot buildings. And multi tenants are maybe one, uh, big job provider in that five hundred thousand square foot building. So I think it's a, that's an important slide. So people understand that it's, it's not just cookie cutter. It will service every single business in the region and allow them opportunity to grow. I think that's very important. Now, one, one thing I wanted to bring up, and if I can, Mayor, I have three more points. You want me to just roll on and be done?
Yeah, if you can go through them quickly, please.
Yep, I will. Okay, um, we've, we've, we made, put a lot of effort in having truck traffic go through Hogan Bay Road. Are we going to get these trucks to go through Hogan Bay Road? Or are they going to be using Marvin and, which is kind of goes against all the stuff we've been doing for the last ten years, you know? So that's a concern. And then what happens if we annex to the south or to the east, properties bigger than forty acres? Then all of a sudden they become subject, subject to half a million square foot buildings? That's a question. And then the positive thing about this is our water quality. You've heard it several times already. Septic sewer is right, right next to a wellhead that our residents are drinking that water directly from. So it's a, that's a win. That's a win. The, the multi-use thing is a win. The septic to sewer is a win. Um, just the concerns are annexation, annexation in the future and how will that, this affect that? And truck traffic diverting it to Hogan Bay Road.
Ryan, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'll try. Um, so on the annexation, um, question, you, you, there are no other properties that are zoned light industrial commercial that would be subject to annexation. So, you know, that would have to be done through a rezone application that, that the council would, would be acting on. And so.
For a second, that, for a second, that, that's what I thought. And that's why I asked the question because I wanted you to reconfirm that because I wasn't a hundred percent positive. So thank you for answering that. Next one.
Yeah, on the, on the traffic, um, so obviously this property is not on Hogan Bay Road. And, um, so the, the applicant did a significant analysis that showed the truck traffic that would be coming off of the interstate and, and accessing the site would be coming, um, you know, basically northbound off Marvin Road through the roundabouts. And, um, you know, under current conditions, it's zoned light industrial commercial. It could allow for buildings up to two hundred thousand square feet. Um, you know, if that was developed today, there would be truck traffic associated with that that would be accessing Marvin Road. So really the main change is in the types of trucks that would be accessing the property. So really the, the, the study shows that with the smaller two hundred thousand square foot buildings, there is going to be a higher volume of smaller trucks versus if it's larger buildings, it will be a lower volume of larger trucks. And so it's really, um, just cha- a, a change in the type of, of truck and the volume of truck versus it's not changing, going to be changing a, you know, an established pattern of how they would access the site.
Okay, and two things I want to say about that is thank God we got intersection, uh, the, the Virgin Diamond completed and done with, you know? And, uh, I can't remember what the other one is, but I, I completely agree with the, the market analysis that they did.
Thank you. Uh, you know, it's having any comments? I, you know, I just wanted, uh, give a quick shout, shout out to Evan Betty and, and, um, what they've done for this community for such a long time and supporting business. I mean, they've been, uh, Evelyn has been around, you know, uh, and a huge influence on the city of Lacey, going back to our, our get go and the, and the, throughout the seventies. And, you know, they've done a lot to support small businesses. And, uh, they've always been committed to this, uh, idea of growing business in the city of Lacey. And, and I think this is a really good compromise, hon- honestly. I think, uh, as Councilor seven points out, um, they're allowing the smaller buildings there, um, allowing people to graduate into larger buildings and possibly graduate into, you know, to the largest building, you know? And, and so there, there really are, uh, accommodating, uh, future business growth. And that's exactly what we try to do here in the city of Lacey. And so this is a, I think, a really good example of, uh, some great work being done by our planning commission and our community economic development team. And, um, I'm, I'm really excited to see what, what can, can happen on, on this property. And so given that, is there any other discussion? Now, uh, Rick?
I just want to add one little element to the, uh, the, uh, Councilor seven's questions about the Hogan Bay truck route, uh, topic is, and, and Ryan at, at provided great information. The only other piece is Marvin Road is a part of that truck route, designated truck route. Cause it's a moat, it's a loop of Hogan Bay Road up to, uh, Hawks Prairie Road and down, and down Marvin. So just want to have that clarification. And it will just change the, mainly the flow of entering, uh, truck vehicles going north versus up Hogan Bay to access the site. But, uh, otherwise, yeah, it's not going to really change patterns. It's just going to change the, decrease the volume a little bit potentially and the type of trucks.
Anything else? And it's been moved in second to adopt this ordinance fifteen seventy six. Does that place some, some check amendments? All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Uh, the motion carries and we've adopted the ordinance. Thank you so much, Ryan. Uh, next up is ordinance.
Great job, Ryan.
Ordinance fifteen seventy seven, um, the impressed, the petty cash funds.
All right, thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening or good afternoon, counsel. Um, you have for your consideration tonight, two ordinances that will amend the L M C as it relates to cash funds. Um, if it pleases the council, I'll make my comments on both ordinances here at the same time. And then at the end, we'll request two separate motions to hopefully adopt the proposed ordinances. And the ordinances basically cover three different changes to cash funds. These are petty cash funds that are authorized by the city council, uh, through the L M C. So I'll walk you through the three changes. Uh, the first is relates to the interlocal drug enforcement funds. Those of you that were on council, um, two years ago will remember that we shifted the accounting administration of the, uh, regional narcotics task force to the county. Uh, so there really isn't a need for the city to have, uh, these funds any longer. And what really triggered the conversation was there are two petty cash funds authorized within this section of the code. Uh, and we wanted to rescind that authorization. But in talking to the finance committee, it was their suggestion that we rescind the entire chapter to reflect the actual, um, administration and practice of the task force. In other words, the city really doesn't have anything to do with the administration any longer. So the authorization for this whole section is no longer needed. Um, so that is a separate ordinance. Uh, the other two changes which are covered in the, um, first ordinance, um, one relates to an existing fund, and that is the law enforcement investigative fund. Uh, this is currently authorized at two thousand five hundred dollars. Um, it is the staff recommendation that we increase this to five thousand dollars. This will enhance the police department's ability to conduct its investigative activities. Uh, the second change within that ordinance, uh, relates to a brand new fund that we are proposing. And this relates to the community resource unit. So this is a relatively new function for the police department. So what is happening is, as this unit is out in a community, um, needs arise and officers oftentimes are paying for some of these needs out of their own pockets and then seeking reimbursement through community organizations such as community action council. So what we would like to do is formalize a fund so the officers don't have to use their own funds for these needs as they arise. Um, to give you an example, some of the activities that are happening, um, really these are, um, kind of life emergency purchases that are happening. Um, in some cases, th- these are really stopping homelessness from happening. So this may be, um, providing money for, uh, identification, state identification so that, uh, folks can obtain social services and assistance. So, um, really making a difference out there. And these are situations that we have to, uh, react immediately versus waiting for an application to go through, um, an organization such as community action council. So, uh, we'd like authorization for petty cash so we could access those funds as soon as possible to help those folks, um, quickly. Um, so this again, like I said, it will be a brand new fund. We'll set it up very similar to the, uh, investigative fund in terms of a bank account and access by certain officers. Um, this, we primarily view this as a minor purchase need, so twenty dollars, uh, often under twenty dollars. Um, in the event that purchases, uh, get larger, we'll seek the, uh, pre-approval by the, uh, police chief or police commander. And we are proposing that we establish this fund at a five thousand dollar level. So in summary, uh, we would like the council to authorize these changes. Uh, these, this does require two separate ordinances because we cannot have, um, uh, more than one subject, uh, within one ordinance. So we would ask the council, uh, consider each of these ordinances separately. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would move to approve ordinance fifteen seventy seven, impress petty, uh, petty cash funds.
Second.
Been moving second, is there any discussion? Councilor Green, second.
Yeah, I have a question, Troy. I, I believe when, um, when you presented this, I think it was the finance committee that you presented this to. Um, isn't it, is it accurate that mo- a lot of the money that the officers lay out, which obviously shouldn't have to lay out of their own pocket? Isn't a lot of that money reimbursed through different organizations? And would that be the same with this fund? It would still be reimbursed through those same organizations?
Um, for the most part, but I, I, you know, I do have to inform the council that some of these are not reimbursable. So they would be city funds that reimburse this. But, um, certainly we'll seek any reimbursement that is, that is eligible. Um, you know, from these various community, um, organizations. But again, it's not in all cases.
Great, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Obviously, this makes a ton of sense. Right, I mean, it's pretty straightforward to me. Um, so, uh, I, in both accounts, so, um, I'm, I'll be in favor of this motion. Any, anything else? Then it's been moved in second to this adopt ordinance fifteen seventy seven. All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Then that vote is carried.
I would also make a motion then for ord- I would also make a motion then for ord- to approve ordinance 1578, repealing the interlocal drug enforcement fund.
Second.
Moving second in. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, I would just say we give great, uh, discussion to our, um, police officers just in servicing and, and protecting. And, and this is no different and in many cases it's life-saving. Uh, I would argue that a lot of, a lot of times this has something to do with, you know, domestic violence and other situations that are.
Is there any discussion on this, the repeal of the interlocal drug enforcement fund? Seeing none, uh, it's been moving second and all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then carries as well. Thank you so much, Troy. Appreciate it.
I meant the prior ordinance, sorry.
Yep, no problem. Uh, now we're going on to mayor's report. Well, it's that time of year, it's right past the first of the year. And it's time where we have a quick discussion about council assignments to intergovernmental boards and committees. You see, oh, throughout the years, we, we, we do this usually once every two years, but there's always a, a check in this time of year to make sure, you know, that these are community assignments changed. Is there a conflict that's happened? Um, uh, do we, do we need to switch around maybe some committee chairs assignments within our, our city assignments? And so I, I, I've been approached so far by a couple council members that are looking for some, um, change to their assignments. And so what we'll do is, is what I propose is that, um, um, i- if you, if between now and next Thursday, if you can let me know if you need to change your assignment, um, then, uh, I'll, I'll gather the information. Um, and then next Thursday, I will, uh, we'll discuss it a little bit more and come up with a recommendation and see, uh, make sure we, everyone fits where, where they need to be. And then in the following Thursday, we will come back, a formal council meeting and accept those changes. And so this is just to give everywhere, all the council members just a quick heads up, you know, take a look at your council meeting. If, if, if you have a conflict or, um, if something's coming up, um, please let, let me know. Um, and then I will, I will try to figure out, you know, between now and next Thursday, and we have some discussion on how we can move that around to accommodate you. And then, um, we'll discuss it next Thursday at work session. So that is my report. Does anyone have any, any questions about that? And then seeing none, we will go on to the city manager's report.
Well, Mayor and City Council have a couple items for you and some updates after these two. Um, first is an interlocal agreement for a regional housing council and Rick Walk is going to provide that background information.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. And I'm here to, uh, request the council to take, make a, approve a motion approving and authorizing the city manager to assign the regional housing council interlocal agreement as presented. And, uh, this sounds familiar to you all. Uh, it is, uh, you did take this action back on August 27th. Um, and at that time, the regional housing council interlocal agreement was including the, uh, uh, South County, uh, communities of Tenino, uh, Rainier and Yukota. Each one of those, uh, communities, he's elected not to participate in this interlocal agreement in the regional housing council. And so now we need to bring back the, uh, techni- um, technical aspect, bring back the ILA to the, uh, the council for approval without, with removing reference to those three communities. So we have that interlocal agreement, uh, in your packets. Again, the, um, the, the purpose of the regional housing council is to, uh, is to, uh, dissolve and replace the, uh, HHSC, which is the, uh, um, Health and Human Services Council. And then the coordinate, uh, federal and regional funding programs to providing, uh, services within the community inconsistent with the, uh, uh, county's five-year plan, uh, for homeless response as well as other initiatives that are regionally coordinated. So with that, I want, again, the opportunity to ask any questions. There are a couple of things I do want to bring to the attention of the council. One, there will be a minor change to the ILA that's before you. Uh, there is on the official notification section, the address for the city of Yelm is incorrect. And so the final ILA will reflect their, their proper address, which is, um, uh, the address is 106 Second Street, Yelm, Washington. And the other piece of it too is you may have had some conversations or heard some conversations about another ILA to specify how the, uh, $1406 will be coordinated through the regional housing council. Now, that, that conversation on that, that, on the 1406 fund started occurring after the drafting of the regional housing council ILA. Because of the time it's taken for this, to get this ILA to this point, those topics have merged. So there, as we finish out the, um, uh, conversation about the 1406 funds, we will be looking at bringing it that back and amending this ILA to incorporate that, those provisions into it. And the reason is going forward, we don't want to lose track of two different ILAs. We want to make sure that it's all in one location. So anybody, you know, five, 10 years from now will draw the connection between the, these two issues. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the regional housing council interlocal agreement as presented. Dr.
Been moving second. Is there any discussion? Now, since it's away, and there, there was a funding mechanism in that where each city was giving a, a portion of their sales tax. Uh, uh, is, is that going to be included at all within this regional housing council? Or is that going away completely as a, a funding mechanism?
That, that has been carried forward and that has HSF, HSF funds, uh, human services funds. That's what's going to be the new name of that. That's still going forward in council. That's a, a good, because there are several funding programs like, um, the home fund, GHG funds and the hand fund that are where the, the county is the, the, the fiduciary for. And so the county commissioners will have final say that, so the ILA set up that the regional housing council will make recommendations on how those funds are spent. And then the county commissioners can, uh, adopt those recommendations. Or if they have a difference of opinion, they refer it back to the regional housing council for further consideration. The ones you just referred to, the HSF funds are all the jurisdictional contributions. And those funds will be decided, uh, and how they're spent will be decided by the regional housing council as a final decision. And while the, um, the county is, is the lead agency, they will not be able to change that decision. They just authorize the expenditure. And, uh, the 1406 funds are a very similar model, which when they go incorporate into this document will be handled the same way as the HSF funds.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to authorize the city manager's regional housing council ILA. All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, sir.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, Rick.
So the other item is that we have a contract before, uh, council for the, um, rehabilitation of service maintenance holes. And Puna Clark is going to provide that background information.
Hello.
Uh, hey, we can see you.
Okay. So I am going to share my screen so I can show you my presentation. Let's see if you can see it on my dual screen.
Yep.
Can you see my presentation?
Yep, looks good.
So, thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council for having me today. Um, I would like to recommend award, award for the manhole rehabilitation 2020 project to the low responsible bidder, which is Northwest Cascade, um, in the amount of $395,021.52. The engineer's estimate was $571,505.60. We had six bidders and we have 80 working days. And we estimate that we will start this project in February. So we will be doing 31 manholes and one lift station wet well with this project. And it is throughout the city of Lacey's, um, service area. And the work includes surface preparation, um, manhole and the lift station wet well rehabilitation, and also includes, um, coding inspections, special services. So let's see. So I've included a project location map. And as you can see, as I mentioned, it's throughout the city of Lacey, um, in different areas. And this, um, a before picture shows it's kind of blurry, but a before picture and our coding after as it is done when we're completed. And that's from our last year's, um, project. And that's, um, if you have any other questions, I can take those now.
Could you, uh, stop sharing your screen for us?
I'd make a motion to award Lacey contract number PW 2020 dash 24 to low bidder Northwest Cascade Incorporated from Pial, Washington in the amount of $395, uh, hundred, $395.21.52. $395,021.52 for the third time.
Thank you for that clarification. We've moved in second. Is, is there any other discussion? Seeing none.
Do- doing the math, we saved 176,000, I think it is from the estimate.
Engineers. Good, good bid, for sure. Um, any other discussion? It's been moved in second. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, Puna.
So a couple of updates, council. One is, as you know, under resolution 1067, if there's an interlocal agreement that meets, uh, the tenants of that where it's either under 25,000, meaning, um, very little cost or no major change into an existing interlocal agreement, the city manager has the authority to sign. Uh, we have updated our independent investigation team anytime there is a deadly force situation involving our police department. So that new interlocal agreement is now called the Capital Metro Independent Investigation Team. Uh, that's involving the cities of obviously Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater and Yelm. Um, this has also been prompted, this changed by initiative 940, which is trying to provide more accountability and transparency to the process if there is an, um, involved shooting with one of our officers. And it also includes the, um, addition of community representatives to be, um, have access to what the investigative team actually gets to, um, review during those, um, incidents of deadly force. Uh, so that was signed last, uh, month in December. Uh, there is no end date unless we terminate the agreement.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Cox, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the status of whether we've appointed citizens to work on this? Or if not, do we have a process set up yet?
So, uh, we do. That process is completed. So, uh, Chief Almada actually, um, per state law, uh, selected the six team members. Um, and that process is complete. And so they are ready to serve in that role if called upon. And my only other update too, um, the city of Lacey is going to retain, uh, congressional district 10 offices on the third floor. Uh, so Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland, um, as you know, won that seat. Uh, their staff is moving into the offices this week. I don't have office hours and I don't have a phone number because they're still actually doing that transition. And obviously with the pandemic, um, they're still working on that. But if, uh, citizens want to go to the website of district 10, they could find that information either by contacting the, the DC office or even the Lakewood office. But it's always been a good, uh, relationship for our residents in our region to have the presence of, um, really our federal representative to be coming here at city hall and to be able to pay a water bill, but also talk about bigger issues at the federal level. So, uh, we are happy to provide a space for our federal representative. So I just want to report that out to council. Thank you.
Uh, I will be meeting with a congresswoman, uh, tomorrow. She's getting her first tour of, of city hall tomorrow and she's looking forward to it. So, um, and Scott, I know if you can make that meeting, that great. If you can't, um, there'll be plenty of opportunities. She's going to be coming to here, you know, quite a bit. She's back in DC, but she will be back in town tomorrow. So, um, I look forward to, uh, speaking with her and having her at Lacey City Hall for sure. So next up is, uh, the standing general committees. First up is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met last month on the 22nd. Um, everything that, uh, was discussed on that finance committee has already been approved today, so I have no report. So I will go over, um, I will go over to, uh, the deputy mayor under, uh, general government, public safety.
So we had, uh, for the general government, which met, um, December 22nd, there were two items. The one was, uh, over the, uh, police department independent investigation team. And with the passage of initiative 940, the Lacey Police Department is required to provide a complete independent criminal investigation of any use of deadly force by, um, our officers. And so the suggested approach is an ILA with other, uh, agencies. And, um, that would include Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater and Yelm, or the capital metro area cities. And, uh, under resolution 1067, the interlocal agreement approval process, uh, approved by city council, the city manager will sign the new capital metro, um, IIT, uh, agreement. And, and then we'll provide the update to city council. And then the last one.
That's what the managers reported on, so, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you just did that and I thought, well, why is it skipping my report? Okay, um, so, um, the last one is of the, uh, joint animal services committee, uh, presented a, an adopt, recommended adoption of an ordinance to restrict the retail sale of dogs, cats and rabbits in pet stores. And to be clear, that is not, um, stopping Petco and, um, PetSmart from selling, not selling animals, uh, because they get their animals from, uh, shelters and the Humane Society, um, in, in conjunction with this. This stops this pet, um, pet, sorry, not pet mill, uh, puppy mill business where, um, animals are, uh, bred so rapidly and many of them are ill when you pick, buy them. And, um, it, it's just totally inhumane. And so, uh, one of the ideas is to come up with a preemptive ordinance set, um, to protect our constituents from predatory lending practices that, um, these puppy mills, um, support. And is there any other questions about that? I can speak more to it if you want. And it did get approved to move on to council by our committee. That's my report.
So under, um, under other business, uh, is, 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 uh, Carol Robinson had signed up for public comment. And, um, we had, um, already moved on for public comments and, uh, and then she had signed on. Um, is it okay for this, this council allow her to give public comment right now? Does anyone have a problem with Carol giving her three minutes? Carol, are you, are you, are you still on? I see you as an attendee. Can you, John, can you let her in? Carol, can you, uh, unmute yourself and, uh, tell us who you are and give your, uh,
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think I may have joined a minute late and I called in and it, I don't know, you guys couldn't hear me. I don't know what happened. Actually, then I used my laptop and I missed the comment section then, by then. So I apologize.
No problem.
It was just a technical thing, I guess. Um, yeah, so thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, actually ask a question. Is that allowed or can I only just make a comment?
You, you can make a comment and, uh, and, and we can see if we can answer it. But, uh, you know, this is public comment period, so please, uh, you know, let us know what's on your mind.
Okay, yeah, I wanted. Okay, yeah, I wanted to talk about a political rally that happened back on November fourteenth in Lacy, Washington. I know we're going back in time a while, but it happened in Lacy. I happened to just be driving by on the freeway when I saw a big rally taking place on the side of the freeway. Near the Marvin Road exit. And then what ensued was some reckless driving on the freeway and intimidation of drivers, including myself. Person in front of me trying to get me to leave the freeway, weaving around on the freeway in front of me, which I found very distressing and alarming. I ended up exiting the freeway just because I wanted to go home, not because this person was trying to get me to leave the freeway. And I immediately called nine-one-one. I was put through to State Patrol and reported it. And their response was, oh yeah, we've had several other reports. And then I said, well, I didn't see anybody on site, any police or state patrol. And their response was, we're still coordinating what to do. And my question to the Lacy City Council is since this rally was at least started. Or partly on Lacy City property, I know the freeway may not be Lacy property, but was also happening off of the freeway. Was the Lacy City Council aware that this was going on? And if so. Were they in coordination with law enforcement? That's really my question.
So we usually don't answer questions here, but no, I'm not aware of any state council member that was aware of a political rally. That started in Lacy. I'm not sure if they, is there, what are the rules? Does the city of Lacy have an LMC that has to do with political rallies? Do they need to coordinate? Does political rallies need to coordinate with the city of, city of Lacy in any way?
There's requirements for certain gatherings to, to give notice depending on the extent of it. I'd have to look it up to give a specific answer, but, but generally, I mean, this is going to fall under the constitutional right to gather. And obviously council can't be in control of all of that nor should council be in control of that. And certainly, law enforcement and city staff are somewhat restrained in what they can do. But anyways, as far as specific guidelines, I'd have to get back to you specifically.
Okay, so, well, you know, I have also been to a rally at the state Capitol. And there were all kinds of police there. So, and state patrol there. Like, like they knew it was going to happen and they were there. But I was alarmed that there was nobody on site. And I, of course, people have the right to peacefully protest. But I observed and experienced myself illegal behavior at this one on November fourteenth. With reckless driving freeway and intimidation. That I was not only disturbing, it was dangerous to be, you know, intimidating drivers going sixty miles an hour on a freeway. So, you know, it's just something that as a citizen of Lacy, I'm concerned for my safety. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you so much, Carol. I, you know, I will gather, maybe some more information from Dave and, and see what the notification requirements, if there's any. You know, we can check back in with each other at, at some point. You can get, you can get ahold of me. My, you know, my email is on the city website. And I can, I can follow back through with you.
Okay, I'm gonna write down your name. Thanks very much.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Yep, you too. So next up is, bye. So next up is boards commissions and community reports. I'm up first. I have no report. Mayor's forum didn't meet the first Friday of this month since that was New Year's Day. And so the rest of our committees meet later in the month. The, the one thing that I guess we will discuss next, next Thursday is that, you know, the deputy mayor and myself have been attending the. The Lacy Youth Council meetings, really for the last past two years. And so we will, we will probably be adding that as a, you know, a board assignment, just for, for the record going forward. And then once it's officially on there, I could, you know, hopefully start reporting, you know, back out about what's going on in the youth council. Although there's been some discussions and I, you know, I would like the council to ponder this. That I don't know if it's gonna happen. It's definitely not gonna happen this year, but it's gonna be maybe a discussion for next year. That, that, that the youth mayor of our, our Lacy Youth Council could be a non-voting member of this Lacy City Council. And so the Northerson Public Schools has two non-voting student members as part of their, their board. And so I've been thinking about this and I think it would be a great opportunity for our youth mayor to be. A part of this council, maybe a, a non-voting member, but can be able to contribute and give their two cents when it comes to issues. That's before this council. And can also report out on the youth council as well under boards commission and community reports for the youth mayor. So we're still just discussing this at the youth council level. It's something I, I've talked about with the youth council and asked if there's interest. I think there is some interest from the council. But it's, it's too late this year because it's a lot to ask the youth mayor. That's a major commitment, right? To, for a youth mayor. And then we have to talk about, you know, would they attend every council meeting? Whether they just tend maybe at work. So I, we have to figure all that stuff out. It's just, it's just an idea. But it's, I think, something worth, worth discussing at the youth council level and our level as well. So that is my report. Deputy Mayor.
Actually, my JASCon meeting was canceled, so I have no. Report either, but I do agree with you about the youth council. It would be really nice to have the mayor at least report out what is happening. So. That's, that's all I can say about it.
Councilor Cox.
Alrighty. Well, just a quick suggestion on youth council. Just kind of like, we have leads and alternates. Perhaps mayor and deputy mayor of the youth council, the deputy could be the alternate. So it wouldn't fall all in one. Member. Okay. Last night, intercity transit met and a few things out of that meeting. One is there's, there's this constant juggling going on about service levels. You know, every time it looks like they're about ready to go with a new one, then we get a setback with more COVID restrictions and that sort of thing. So I just want to report that there are just multiple service plans at the ready. On how COVID impacts our community and of course, the frontline staff for intercity transit. The main priority and the big message there is, you know, to keep everybody safe and healthy while, you know. This is going on. So I hope that the public will be patient and that one of these days we'll have full buses. Riding through town again. It also, General Manager Anne Freeman-Menzanero's shared a big thank you to the, the intercity transit staff. Because they have just been going through, much like our staff has. Having to adapt lots of different ways and all. And I just, I don't know how much the public appreciates. How difficult it is to adjust a bus route. I mean, there is a hugely complex set of algorithms you have to go through. Because one tweak on one route can affect the whole system. It's just, it's really tough. So those people work hard and I want to give them a shout out too. We welcomed two new members last night to the Transit Authority. Newly elected County Commissioner Carolina Mejia is replacing Ty Minser on the authority. And Justin Belk is the new citizen representative on there. We had a lovely report last night on the seven organizations who were chosen to receive surplus van grants. And those groups are the Innovations Human Trafficking Collaborative. Catholic Community Services of Western Washington, Thurston County Food Bank, Interfaith Works. Safe Place, Sacred Heart Catholic Church here in Lacy, and Behavioral Health Resources. I'm sorry, we have a hungry cat here. Anyway, each, each of those organizations had representatives there to share their stories about the difference. That these vans are making to the community. So it's, it really makes you feel good about doing that. And then finally, we got a report on the intercity transit's youth education program, which is called Walk and Roll. And this program teaches kids safety on, you know, biking, walking or taking the bus to school. And like our park staff, they've also had to do a lot of adapting and compensating for the restrictions. But they managed to come up with some really creative ways to keep kids and families engaged in this and keep the program alive. So that's my report. The other Regional Housing Council will meet later this month. And as was just discussed, Health and Human Services needs to come off our report list. Because it has been absorbed into the Regional Housing Council.
Thank you. And hopefully you can feed your cat soon. Sounds very hungry.
At first, they sounded like, help, help.
Ordinarily I would mute, but I couldn't mute.
I have one report this evening. Thurston nine-one-one met yesterday. And just a few items there that I thought would be of interest. There's a subcommittee that's been formed to discuss subscriber equipment. So with the new radio system, the initial equipment that the fire departments and police departments will use will be supplied. Through the, through, from TCOM, from nine-one-one. The question came up at a meeting recently about subscriber equipment as it wears out, as it needs to be replaced, maintained, all of that. How is that going to be paid for? And the original plan was each of the entities would be, would be on their own for that, the police departments and fire departments. But it's come up that there could be some issues with that. So a subcommittee has been formed. Our police chief is sitting on that committee to. Give the voice of city policing on there. So we'll have more information on that as it comes to be. We are working on the renewal of the interlocal agreement. They, they should be coming to our, they should be contacting you, Scott, to get onto the agenda. For a work session here in the near future. We also discussed the Lewis County feasibility report. I've talked about it a couple of times and a couple of meetings that I've sat in on. Lewis County is very interested in merging with Thurston, with our, with our TCOM. They have some problems. And kind of wanted to give our board a briefing before we get a presentation from the consultant next month. But there's, um, there's a lot to work out and we're still trying to figure out. If there would truly be any benefit to the people of Thurston County. You know, my, my biggest point on this in all of the meetings I've had with Lewis County on it is, I'm open to the conversation. But there has to be some benefit to the people of Thurston County. Better service, lower cost, something. We, we certainly won't. Can't accept the merger if it's gonna cost the people of Thurston County more or lower their service to help the neighboring county. If we can do it and eliminate some level of government there and make it more efficient, that's great. But at this point. I don't know that I see that happening. So I'll, I'll give you more as we get it, but right now it's not. I, I just don't think it looks like that promising at the moment, to be honest.
Is it because that, is it because that we'd have to share, share our staffing with them to go on the systems?
Yeah, well, the model would require more staff, clearly for us, right? We would have to hire more staff, which means training more staff as well. And there's some issues with the training and the timelines that they'd like to do it in. But, but the biggest issue for me is a funding. You know, the people of Thurston County have authorized a two tenths of a penny sales tax to, to pay for all of our nine-one-one services. In Lewis County, they're not funded by a tax source. They're funded by user fees, which TCOM was many years ago. That's a much less sustainable funding method. And my biggest concern is in the long run, can they actually pay their fair share of it? Because it certainly would not be fair to the people of Thurston County to pay for Lewis County service. So that's a major issue to me.
Okay, thanks for that update.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Couple other things. We did, so you, you're probably familiar with the Family First Act. Which expired as of December thirty-first. The Board of TCOM decided to extend that for the employees of TCOM. Through the end of March to give them a little bit more flexibility in being able to use time off for COVID-related issues. And then last thing, a couple of bills that'll be in the legislature this year that are being watched pretty closely. And I think one of them, I just thought, I found this very interesting. So hopefully maybe you will as well. One of those bills would actually require training and certification for nine-one-one operators and dispatchers. Believe it or not, currently, there's no requirement for any certification for nine-one-one operators. You know, anybody can do it without any certification. There's no statewide requirement for any certification. Now, in Thurston County, ours are all certified. But there is no requirement by that of state law. So that's one of the things that's gonna be in the legislature this year. And the second one deals with the National Suicide Hotline. I don't know if you're familiar, but nine-eight-eight is a, a new requirement. It's going to be a requirement that all states have a nine-eight-eight suicide hotline phone number. The legislation has to do with how it'll be enacted here in the state. So that's another bill that'll be on the floor this year. So that is my report.
Thank you. I'm, yeah, I'm all in support of nine-eight-eight. Obviously, when you figure out the logistics of that. But I think that's gonna be very, very important to roll out.
Yeah, some of the logistics they're concerned with is just how it'll, people calling nine-one-one instead of nine-eight-eight and that kind of thing. How that transfer would happen, just to make sure that it's clean and easy and as accessible as possible, of course.
Yeah, well, hopefully keep us, keep us informed on that one. Next up is Councilor Miller.
Okay, Thurston TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council actually meets tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. Thurston Thrives have not had a meeting with them since the last time I gave a report. LTAC has not met either, even though we will most likely meet next month. And Thurston County Coalition is Trafficking is actually meeting right now. And probably discussing the, the upcoming event on the twenty-eighth, which is the community conversation that I've invited you guys to in the, in our previous meeting.
Great. Well, we'll try to get this meeting over so you can just hop on there. Councilor Steadman.
Thank you, Mayor. Solid Waste Advisory Committee welcomed Carolina Mejia, Commissioner newly-elect. So that was a, a great news. Other than that, we had a update on the RFP process, which is going out next week. And you guys heard me report on it over and over the last several months, closer to a year and a half. And my extreme concerns when, with this whole process. And it's really a business one-on-one. And it's great that we have business owners on our, on our council to understand this. The more you supply with the, with the less ability to deliver, the more it's gonna cost you. So having said that, Thurston County is going out to bid next week, knowing that Kitsap County, the same exact size county as us, within a couple thousand residents. And using the same contractors that, that already don't have, you know, unlimited. RFPs, or I mean. Full-time employee hours, you know, they're limited. They, they're understaffed like a lot of businesses out there. But having said that, I urge the board chair, because I'm not getting anywhere with this, Jim Cooper with the city of Olympia. I, I asked him to approach the county separately to pause that process. Because Kitsap comes out within two weeks with their numbers from the bid process. So all, right now, everything's hypothetical. No one knows what those numbers will be until they're public in a couple of weeks. And if we go out to RFP process next week before those numbers come out and they come out thirty percent higher. Then guess what we can expect to pay? Plus a little bit more because we're using the same few contractors. That can accomplish the, the completion of these, this contract, the size of this contract. And now they're already taxed by having to come up with the infrastructure and going through the bid process and all this extra work that they don't have to do, except when there's an RFP process. And then to go through another one, knowing that we have, they have an option on the books for five years, which there's there's two positives to this. That the, you know, the five year extension that they're limiting to only use one or two years of when we can lock it, you know, use that option fully for the five years. And there's twofold. The ratepayers here are guaranteed to pay the same amount and not increase. But it also guarantees that the contractors that are bidding for this work don't have to put in extra work that they're already having to put in with the bid process. It's a year and a half ahead of us. You understand what I'm saying? So, right? So if you were in competition, right, which you are with other car washes, and you're having to do extra work with for the same amount or less money, you're gonna have to pass that on to the the people that are getting their cars cars washed, or me, same thing, you know, leasing the businesses. So this is the way I see it, because I'm a business owner, is if we require them to do more work when they're already taxed to do it, right, they're already stretched to limits. And those numbers, two weeks from now, come out twenty or thirty percent higher, we're guaranteed to pay that plus a little bit more because we're behind in the game.
So, Mike, can you answer me a question? If the RFP process goes out, do they do they have to accept the a proposal? Can't they just reject all the proposals?
Well, that's the that's the question, because you've heard me talk about, you know, possibly the city of Lacey combining with other municipalities and going out to RFP. And there's some people saying, no, you have to be locked into it. Other people say, no, you don't have to accept those bids in business as usual. Right? The 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 fact of the matter is, if the contracts, when the contract ends, you're gonna have to renegotiate again. And those companies are gonna remember who forced work on them, extra work, and who didn't, right? And so these are all just concerns. And in two weeks, then maybe the numbers come back that we're paying less, or Kitsap's paying less. We'll still expect to pay a little bit more than that, because, again, we're almost two years behind in the process as them. We'll be competing with the contractors having to build the same infrastructure, like the tipping trucks and all that stuff will have to be built. And theirs is gonna come first, because they're a year and a half ahead of us. And like I said, these are all concerns. I don't see it being costing us less. So why? Why would we not take the five year extension, the full thing, and lock it into our ratepayers? Because, again, supply and demand, business one oh one. If there's more, yeah, right?
You've been talking about this for a bit. I appreciate it.
It's just frustrating trying to make, you know, a case because the end result will be our ratepayers paying more, and that's my concern. And I don't think I'm gonna be wrong. Only I I can't convince the county of that. So maybe Jim can on the side note, and but you know what? It doesn't hurt. I asked them to just wait two or three weeks until those numbers come out. And then maybe I'm completely wrong, and I can sit here and eat crow and say, hey, I was wrong. But at least it resulted in ratepayers paying less as compared to more. If what if I'm right? So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, buddy. Councilmember Kunkel.
Well, are you all sitting down? This is gonna take a while. I have no report.
Well, then we.
Oh, I do have something. So for Councilmember Cox, if you need some extra cat food, let me know. I can hook you up. But don't starve your cat. He sounds hungry.
Well, thank you, everyone. Obviously, here we are, seven days into twenty twenty two, or twenty twenty one, and it's already been a crazy seven days. You know, we got twenty twenty. It was crazy. I'm ready to go to twenty twenty two. Yeah. The way twenty twenty one's starting out, let's just go to twenty twenty two. You know, can I make a motion to do that? So but just want to make sure everyone's, you know, safe and hanging in there. And hope you had a, you know, Happy New Year. And I know it's been a tough, tough start this year. But, you know, as always, we'll we'll stick together. You know, I have great faith in the people of Lacey and this council to, you know, meet the challenges that we face. So with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. See ya.